Let's call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order Tuesday, September 6, 2022 at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted on Friday, September 2nd at Hometown Ace Hardware, Milton Pigly-Windley, and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. We have on agenda Pledge of Allegiance. Public comments. We have a few individuals signed up for our public comments. And if you would like to comment now, you can do so, or you could wait till the agenda item comes up. And if you would like to comment now, please come up to the podium, give us your first, last name, and your address, and what agenda item you're speaking on. Up to the podium?
My name is Joe Gasser. I live in 5060 Walnut Grove Road, Milton. The reason I'm here today is to bring up a point of concern I've had regarding the Milton Dog Park. Being a dog owner, I regularly take my dog to the park, and there have been instances I've encountered with aggressive dogs at the dog park. One person in particular, whose dog regularly acted in aggressive nature, then all of a sudden turns its focus on my dog and acted aggressively, and I had to break up a dog fight. And I requested this individual to depart from the dog park. She left to the double door enclosure, and then immediately turned around and released her dog back into the park to have another go at my dog. At that point in time, it prompted me to go back home and call the Milton Police and report what I had seen. I'd also witnessed this individual abuse her dog on several occasions by twisting its ear until it howled in pain, and not discontinuing after that to continue abusing the dog. And furthermore, I witnessed her abusing other people's dogs as well, which I found totally unacceptable. So I left, as I said, and reported to the police. And another person I knew who was actually behind me here also experienced some similar circumstances he's going to speak to as well. What I saw was, the police had apparently talked to her, but she continued to come, which prompted me this week to call, and I spoke to the Deputy Chief of Police, asking why this person was allowed to continue having a dog that is knowingly aggressive come to the dog park. And he responded to me by saying, "There's a city ordinance regarding the Milton Dog Park stating, 'A dog is aggressive when it has attacked another dog or worse to another dog.'" To which I responded, "That's after the fact. There should be rules regarding the Milton Dog Park that do not allow aggressive dogs to be present." Anybody that owns a dog can tell an aggressive dog by its behavior. There's rough fighting, there's checking, but there's also aggression. My dog is, when it was six months old, was almost killed by another dog at the Milton Dog Park, a husky that acted very aggressively. And if the owner hadn't been there to restrain her dog, my dog wouldn't be here today. People in my neighborhood who own dogs, I asked them, "Why didn't you go to the Milton Dog Park?" And every instance I've encountered, they say they allow people to bring aggressive dogs into the dog park. What I would request that you do is review the Jefferson Dog Park rules. Number one, aggressive dogs are not permitted. If a dog is shown aggressive, it's asked by the owner to remove the dog and never to return again. Secondly, have solid recall if your dog takes an aggressive stance, the ability to recall your dog to prevent any action that would result in dangerous effects to another dog. The current rules of the Dog Park are very nebulous. They don't really address this issue. Item number three on the Dog Park rule, say if your dog acts out of line, barking too much, plays too rough, you are to leash the dog and leave. That's the closest you come to addressing an aggressive dog at the Dog Park. And I'm afraid people bring children there, they could be injured by an aggressive dog, and in my opinion, some action needs to be taken to adjust the current city ordinance regarding aggressive dogs at the Dog Park, rather than a simple ordinance violation after the injury has already occurred. And that's what I came to speak for today.
Thank you very much. And next?
My name is Keely Iverson. I live at 348 Elm Street, Milton, Wisconsin. And I'm just pretty much echoing everything that Joe has just stated. Sorry, I make it emotional. My dog is like my baby because I can't have kids. So knowing that, by bringing her to the Dog Park every day to go see her friends, like Joe Stella, or her friend Wong, all of these dogs that she gets so excited to see every day, and if an aggressive dog comes in, that there's nothing that can happen until after the fact if she's hurt or killed. And I strongly echo all of Joe's sentiments about just changing the ordinance to make it where aggressive dogs are no longer allowed down there, because it's not safe for the dogs, it's not safe for their owners, the children that come in there. It's just very dangerous and it's very frustrating that we've called the police department multiple times and nothing ever happens. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming to speak to us. The next person signed up is Brandon Johnson. Do you want to speak now or wait? Okay, alright. Yep. Okay, our next item on the agenda is our meeting dedication. And thank you Jenny in advance for doing the meeting dedication.
Alright, so with less than three weeks left until September 22nd, which is the official date of the end of summer, I would like to dedicate this meeting to the variety of summer activities that are available within the city and the volunteers that have made them possible. So in summer of 2022, residents, visitors, and community members were able to enjoy splashing in the Milton splash pad, watching fireworks provided by the Fourth of July celebration, enjoying a ballgame in one of the city parks, eating one of the famous pork dishes in North Greenwich Park, listening to music at the Gathering Green, or attending one of the many other popular events that have brought people together and made Milton not only home for many, but a destination for all. Here's to a successful summer, and I look forward to seeing what the change in the seasons has in store.
Thank you very much. And the splash pad is still open, correct, Mark E? Was that a yes?
Yes.
Alright, so there you have it. The Splash Park remains open until it's too cold. Alright, the next item on our agenda is mayoral proclamations. And the first one is International Underground Railroad Month. And since there's only two, and they're not really long, I'm going to read them. Whereas, "The Underground Railroad was a secret network of routes and safe houses utilized by enslaved African Americans to escape to Canada, among other destinations, where they would not be subject to so-called fugitive slave laws during the lead-up to the Civil War. And whereas, between 1842 and 1861, more than 100 formerly enslaved individuals, including Caroline Quarles, the first freedom seeker to travel through Wisconsin, and Joshua Glover, whose liberation from a Milwaukee jail cemented our reputation as a staunch abolitionist state, were aided on their journey to freedom by Wisconsin residents. And whereas, while accounts of Underground Railroad experiences are scarce, as both those who traveled it and those who aided them had to be discreet about their activities, documentation relating to several courageous journeys through Wisconsin have since been uncovered. And whereas, our state is committed to the preservation of our Underground Railroad history, and in fact, Wisconsin is home to the only authenticated underground tunnel used by freedom seekers in North America located at the Milton House Museum in Milton. And whereas, we recognize the efforts of the many people in Wisconsin and throughout the world who have dedicated their lives to keeping the memory of the Underground Railroad alive through the National Park Services National Underground Railroad Network to Freedom and UNESCO Sites of Memory Designations. And whereas, this occasion provides an opportunity for all Wisconsinites and all Americans to acknowledge the contributions of the Underground Railroad to the eradication of slavery in the United States, and to reflect on our collective past and how it informs the systems of oppression that persist in our culture and institutions. And whereas, this month, the State of Wisconsin commends the courage, determination, and resilience of thousands of enslaved individuals who risked their lives on the Underground Railroad, and we reaffirm our commitment to creating a more just and equitable state and nation that would make these freedom seekers proud. Now therefore, I, Anisa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as International Underground Railroad Month in the City of Milton. And I will sign this the 6th day of September 2022. And in addition, there is another very important proclamation. Halloween Trick or Treat Hours. Whereas, the City of Milton wishes a safe and festive Halloween celebration for its citizens and encourages participation in the gaiety of this holiday by both young and old. And whereas, miniature ghosts, goblins, witches, and other mysterious creatures emerge each year on October 31st. And whereas, they ring doorbells of their neighborhood and friends to extort goodies. And whereas, the safety of these small creatures is assured by an accompanying adult and is a source of amusement and good cheer for both the very young and the older people whom they visit and entertain. Whereas, I, Anisa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, proclaim Monday, October 31st, 2022, as Halloween in the City of Milton. Therefore, let it be known that Monday, October 31st, 2022, shall be known as Halloween Trick or Treat Day, and the celebration will be observed between the hours of 5:30 PM and 7:30 PM. And I will sign this 6th day of September 2022. Very important mayoral work right there. And something I look forward to every year. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2022-20, resolve, resolution and recognition of Kurt Witinski and Gail Sumi for their dedication to the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. Many of our members of the City Council, and including myself, have gone and participated in many trainings and conferences that the League of Wisconsin Municipalities have put on. Kurt has long been an effective lobbyist on the behalf of municipalities and making sure our lawmakers and Madison hear our voices and our concerns on behalf of our residents that live in the City of Milton, municipalities, and villages throughout the state of Wisconsin. And Gail Sumi has been involved with the League and their communications director over many, many years, and is a former Board of Directors member for the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. I can say that Kurt and Gail will be very much missed as they leave for further adventures. So, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That motion carries. And a huge thank you to Kurt and Gail. Approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Consent agenda carries and is passed. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance 500 rezoning property along Arthur Drive from B2 to R4.
So Whitewater Housing has submitted an application to rezone the subject property located at the southwest corner of St. Mary's and Arthur Drive. Whitewater Housing is the entity that intends to purchase the property. We have received consent from the current owner, Amwood Homes, for this rezoning request. Upon approval of the rezoning request, the applicant can move forward with their purchase of the property. They are in attendance this evening if the council has questions, but it is their intent to develop the site with multifamily housing. And although they have not finalized a plan, in order to have the site developed multifamily housing, it would need to be rezoned in its entirety to R4. As it currently sits, the property is split zoned between B2 and R4, which recognizes a former layout of the site. Since that time, those sites have been reconfigured through a land division process, and the rezoning did not take that into accordance. So by rezoning the entire property to R4, it would bring the site first into compliance with our zoning map, but second, allow them to develop that site with multifamily. Earlier this evening, the Plan Commission held a public hearing to review the rezoning request and ultimately approve the rezoning request unanimously. There was no comments from the public regarding the proposal. Notification was sent out to all landowners within 250 feet of the site, and a Class 2 notice was published in the paper. Upon rezoning, in the owner's, applicant's intent to purchase the property, they would move forward through a site plan development process with the City of Milton, which would then be rereviewed by the Plan Commission. In discussions at the Plan Commission, the applicant noted that they don't have final development plans yet, but could build one or multiple buildings on the site. And depending on their final development plans, it may require a PUD rezoning, which would be a subsequent action, but they haven't made that determination yet as to whether, how that site would be laid out. And as I indicated, Matt is out in the audience this evening if folks have questions for him. But other than that, the Plan Commission forwarded a favorable recommendation to the Common Council for approval of rezoning.
There we go. Any questions or comments or a motion?
I have a question. I was just kind of wondering if you were considering three-bedroom? It's a need that we have in our community and with the family situations where we have fathers and mothers that are both taking their children. Those people especially have requirements for specific residences, and I'm sure you'd probably get a waiting list.
My name is Matt Keel, address 503 Center Street in Lake Geneva, representing the applicant. Any questions? Yes. And as I think I put in one of my communications with Al, our research shows that there's a lack of both one-bedroom and three-bedroom housing, not only in this community, but in many communities. So initially, our intention is to focus on those types of units going forward. Not making any promises because we're still in the very preliminary stages, but we have another development we're looking at in Lake Geneva that would be very similar. Both the single unit and the three-bedrooms is what we determine are of the greatest need. So.
You can't put your microphone on.
Okay, I can only ask. I can't tell you you have to, so thank you.
We hear you.
Anything else from anyone?
I'll make the motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2022-500. We have the second and third reading and adopt.
Second.
Well, look at you guys. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding an option to purchase land along Putman Parkway to Liquid Freight.
So Liquid Freight, represented by Mr. Brandon Johnson, who's out in the audience this evening as well, has submitted an option to purchase 23.55 acres of land within the City of Milton, within Tiff District Number 6 and Number 9. This land is located at the western terminus of Putman Parkway. It is the applicant's intent to develop that site with either one or multiple buildings, depending on, wants to consolidate his business holdings into that, into that land. The reason move forward with an option to purchase as opposed to an offer to purchase is because they are still in their fact-finding due diligence stage and want to make sure that they work through their process. But we're very eager to secure rights to the land as they see how fast Milton is growing and the fact that we have two more offers to purchase on the agenda this evening. So I encouraged him to do so, to bring forth the option. The option is set to be executed or expire by March 16th of 2023, which may seem like a very long time from now, but it actually isn't when you consider it's early way through September. And there is an option fee of $500 which would be made payable to the City of Milton. In the event that he does exercise the option, that would be accommodated with a Tiff Development Agreement that would need to be entered into before closing could occur, similar to the other land sales that we do within our Tiff District. So it is the city's recommendation to approve the option to purchase 23.55 acres of land along Putman Parkway to Mr. Brandon Johnson of Liquid Freight.
And would you like to speak on anything?
Brandon Johnson, my address is 7843 North Tokahoe Trail, Edgerton. I just signed up to speak in case anyone had any questions. I didn't know the full assortment of how it works. But in the event anyone did, I can answer any questions of what kind of company we are and what we're wanting to do. But if you don't, that's fine also.
Anybody have any questions?
Just curious, since you mentioned it, what kind of company are you? We are in liquid food-grade transportation, so we have the nice shiny stainless steel tankers, much like CQC has and is moving in also. So it will be, there will be two of us moving similar liquid food-grade products, which will be great.
Anything for anyone else?
I do have something for Al, so.
Your microphone, please. Thank you.
Al, in the, I think we've done this before, but enlighten me because I forget easily. We have two Tiff districts involved, correct?
Yeah, currently this property sits within Tiff 6 and Tiff 9. Tiff 6 has passed its expenditure period. So any kind of development agreement would be actually in Tiff 9, but I just wanted to disclose the fact that it's within two Tiff districts. So the district that the development agreement would be through and funded by would be Tiff 9.
Okay, that explains it. Thank you, because I was confused. Because I thought we were.
I'll make a motion that we approve the option to purchase 23.55 acres of land along Putnam Parkway by Liquid Freight.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a sale of land to? Hogan? Holbach Holdings Incorporated along Putman Parkway.
So similarly to the last item on the agenda, but dissimilarly, this is a true offer to purchase. The purchaser has indicated that they would purchase approximately 12 acres of land, which is currently located south of Putman Parkway on land owned by the City of Milton within Tiff District Number 11. You'll see that this item mirrors the next item on the agenda as this process started with the two entities wishing to purchase together, and then decided it would be in their best interest to purchase similarly sized pieces of property next to each other. So both will subdivide the parcel shown in the location map. That will be accommodated through a Tiff Development Agreement and a land division or certified survey map that would come forward in the future. In the situation of Holbach Holdings, they intend to develop the site with a mix of uses. They've indicated that they would be similar to the Gateway Properties, but of a different size and scale for larger kind of contractor shops. And they would occupy approximately, you know, 12 acres of land, which would be fully developed through a certified survey map and a Tiff Development Agreement. Closing on the property could not be conducted until such time that those two items are brought forward. But again, their intent is to have this offer to purchase accepted, so they can start that process.
Any questions or comments? Or a motion?
Move for approval of the sale of land to Hogan-Holbach Holdings Incorporated along Putman.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a sale of land to Powell Construction Incorporated along Putman Parkway.
Again, identical to the item previous to it, it is Powell Construction's intention to purchase approximately 12 acres of land in the city's industrial park, which would be accompanied by a future Tiff Development Agreement and certified survey map, which shows the exact dimensions of the parcel. Dissimilar to the previous item, this, it's the owner's intent to construct an approximately 50,000 square foot facility on this site to house their operations for Powell Construction. Again, it's their intent to move forward with the offer to purchase so they can start that process. The Tiff Development Agreement, Site Plan, and Land Division, which would all come forward to the Common Council, with the exception of the Site Plan, for future consideration. And it's their intent to start construction, I would imagine, in the spring.
Questions or comments from council? Or a motion?
Make a motion to approve the offer to purchase land by Powell Construction Inc.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Anything else for anyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Alright, moving right along. Discussion and possible action regarding a request to begin the Rock County Circuit Court abatement process for the property located at 926 Nelson Avenue.
So Officer Blaine Larson, our code enforcement officer, is present this evening, and I can kind of kick it off. And if Blaine, I miss anything, please let me know, and you can feel free to jump up. The city has been working with the property owner at 926 Nelson Avenue for approximately 11 years on the condition of the property. The property owners do not reside at the home, so the home is vacant. Over time, the state of the property continues to deteriorate at an increasing rate. It started off with just kind of weed abatement and lawn mowing and dead tree removal. And now we've come into the position of the home being unsecure in terms of animals penetrating the exterior of the facility. We've gotten a lot of complaints from neighboring properties. Citation was issued to the property owner, in which they appeared in court in August, and paid the citation or agreed to pay the citation, but had no immediate plans to abate the property. These situations are rare, and they are challenging, especially for the neighbors as they wait through this process. But when we have a property owner that is reluctant to, you know, properly secure and preserve their home, our course of action is to try to work with the property owner. If we're unable to get successful remediation of the property, citation is the next step. And after citation is issued, if there's still no movement on the property, the next option is to go to Circuit Court to have the Circuit Court provide an injunction that would allow the city to at least bring the property, to secure the property, and do other maintenance on the site that will hopefully bring it back to some semblance of a reasonable neighbor in a neighborhood process. So Blaine, did I miss any major points? If you could come up here, just because we're recording, Blaine. If you could come up here, just because we're recording, Blaine.
Yeah, we really started the process with this address. Howie Robinson sent a letter last September requesting that they fix the house at that time. Gave him till October 20th of 21 to get it done. And there was no response from them then. I met with the property owner in April in person and she talked about possibly selling the house and tried to make some plans to fix it. But then the court also, municipal court also gave her a chance from May till August to make some plans to fix the residence. And she did nothing, just to bring you up to speed that way. That we've really went out of our way. And area residents there have offered to buy that house from her, but she refused to sell it to her. So we've had numerous complaints about this. And I think that we really owe those residents to taking action to fix that up. They've dealt with this way too long.
Any questions?
I do, or comment. I really appreciate us moving forward if we do choose to do that tonight. I hear quite regularly from the neighbors because I guess they see me as their local alderman. And so when I walk my dog, it's almost every time I go past, there's someone says, "When are you going to do something about that house?" So it's been, I know you've been challenged with this thing and it needs to be.
Infants, you know, infiltrating the house there is just terrible. It's tearing out all the soft bits and on every level of the house, I'd hate to be in the house because we don't know what's going on in there.
Mayor, I would make the motion to authorize Attorney Schrader to begin the nuisance abatement proceedings for 926 Nelson Street.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Anything else for anyone? All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Thank you.
I feel like we cannot have those types of situations in our neighborhoods. Rodents are very difficult to get rid of. We found, we have found that out with previous homes in the city.
So true. All right, discussion of possible action regarding purchasing replacement mixers for the wastewater treatment plant. WWTP is.
So this is for the phosphorus removal process at the wastewater treatment plant. There are six mixers in the process. All but I think one of them have been, or only one of them has been replaced since the original plant rehab back in 2001. There's been some recent maintenance performed on some of those. It was discovered that the mixers that were there needed some work. So we took the mixers that we had in inventory and put them in the tanks. And we need to replace additional mixers now to replace mixers as part of a future maintenance plan. The operators obtained quotes from Xylem Water Solutions. They're the provider of the current mixers. They also have done the maintenance for us on the existing mixers. The price for each mixer was $11,639.25. And the total amount to purchase three mixers would be $34,917.75 and will be funded by the wastewater utility.
Questions, comments?
We've certainly got an education recently in terms of what happens when wastewater treatment plants fail, given the Jackson, Mississippi situation. And I've found it really interesting, all the finger pointing that's gone on as far as, you know, people saying it's a federal responsibility or state responsibility. And what it really comes down to is the local government hasn't invested in one of the very, very basic needs. So I think it's very important that we make sure that the plant is as good as it can possibly be. I would move that we approve the purchase of the replacement mixers.
Second.
Right, there's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we're getting replacement mixers. Discussion and possible action regarding replacement of outdoor ductwork insulation.
This is to install new insulation on ductwork between the HVAC units and the buildings at the wastewater treatment plant. It would be located at the main lab building as well as the biosolids thickening building. The insulation protects the ductwork and over, again, since the last rehab, it's deteriorated and just needs to be replaced. It's coming away from, it's separating, delaminating from the ductwork. Staff obtained quotes from Express Insulation for the replacement. And the total for the two, the ductwork on both units was $9,440. And again, it will be funded by the wastewater utility.
Questions or comments?
I have a question, Mark. My ignorance might show here. The ductwork does what? It cools or it transfers heat or?
Yeah, the ductwork allows the air to exchange from the HVAC unit into the building or vice versa.
Anything else? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the quote from Express Insulation for the replacement of the outdoor ductwork insulation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Get new insulation too. Discussion and possible action regarding the 2023 Joint Powers Agreement with Rock County.
So this is an annual agreement that's required by state statutes. So that really covers the 911 telecommunications system for Rock County in which all telecommunications for 911 are housed within Rock County as opposed to having each municipality have their own individual 911 communication centers. So on an annual basis, we approve this resolution in order to kind of make sure that we're up to snuff with state statutes and make sure that the citizens of Milton are covered under this kind of successful collaboration amongst Rock County jurisdictional municipalities.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I would move approval of the Joint Powers Agreement.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action on acceptance of donation of Bourne Learning Trail at Crossridge Park from United Way Black Hawk Region and Diamond Assets. Inka, are you talking about this?
Sure. So the city of Milton is going to be receiving, I guess, a Bourne Learning Trail from United Way and Diamond Assets. They're the sponsor for the trail for Milton. We met with Parks and Recreation Commission and the commission elected to have it at Crossridge Park because there's a nice trail there already and there's ample parking and it's right by the YMCA as well. So thinking that their programming could tie into that as well. The Bourne Learning Trail, it's a early literacy, early learning program that United Way offers. So next week on the Day of Caring, which is on September 14th, there's going to be a group of volunteers from Diamond Assets and potentially other companies in the region that are going to be painting the designs on the trail, which was freshly seal coated thanks to our Public Works Department for contracting that service out and getting a really nice seal coat done on that space. So then it's, won't have to seal coat over it in the future. There's 10 signs total. There's going to be, each of them are in English and Spanish. And I think it's going to be a great addition to Crossridge Park. So looking for approval to accept the donation tonight.
I have a question. Like who is assigned to keep up the signs and keep them painted or whatever? How does that go?
Yeah, so if there is any vandalism of the signs, there is some funding available with the sponsorship from Diamond Assets to replace the signs. For the painting at some point, we'll have to go through the process of repainting it, but hopefully that won't be for a number of years. I don't know how long Beloit and Janesville have had theirs and I think they're still in pretty good shape too.
Yeah, this, I was on the United Way Board when this program started. I think it was about five years ago. So they started small. I think their first trail was in Beloit and now they have multiple trails in both Beloit and Janesville. And as far as I know, and I think Mary Fanning Penny reiterated, none of them had to, none of them have had to be repainted as of yet. In the event that they do, you know, that the asphalt deteriorates and the designs on the, on the trail start to dissipate, the signs will still be there. The painting of the trail is just kind of a nice amenity to beautify it and make it more whimsical. But the signs are, you know, they're heavy duty. I mean, they're like a standard street municipal sign and they're going to be erected on metal posts. So those things probably, you know, they might not have been replaced for decades.
Right.
Right.
I was just curious. I was just curious. Any other comments, questions, or a motion?
I would make the motion to accept the donation of the Bourne Learning Trail from the United Way Black Hawk Region and Diamond Assets. Thank you very much.
She's the second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Okay, you guys are just whipping through the agenda tonight. Y'all must be tired from your three day weekend. All right, general items, committee reports. Anybody have a committee report they'd like to share?
His representation meets tomorrow.
Okay. Eric says his committee hasn't met, according to Eric. No. What are you meeting?
Tomorrow.
All right, thank you for those two reports.
Isn't exactly a committee report, but the resolution for the merger of the Arrowhead Library System with Lake Shore's Library System is on the county board agenda for this Thursday night. So that's moving forward. It got approved by the county staff committee this afternoon.
Thanks for that update.
I have a question. The people that spoke at the beginning of the meeting, can we have a little more information about that situation with the dog park? What, maybe we should have a discussion?
Do you want it on a future agenda or something? Or it's not on this agenda, so.
I think I would like to have that on a future agenda. There were a lot of people involved in building that park and they like to use it. And these kinds of things just truly need to be addressed.
Would we have that on Parks and Rec or City Council? What do you think? Can we talk about it, Mark?
You can direct where it would go.
Okay. Where am I directing it to go?
Bring it back here for discussion.
Could I recommend that we direct it to Parks and Rec to bring back in the, for future discussion if needed?
So Parks and Rec will meet tomorrow night, but then they'll meet again on the 19th and then you have a council meeting scheduled for the 20th. So if you want it on both agendas, we can do that.
Why not? Eric says bring it on. Any other committee reports? Staff reports? Jenny, I'm just going to call on you so I don't forget to call on you. Because I'm a terrible mayor.
All right, well, at the end of August, I was able to go to the annual clerks conference where we were gearing up for some updates and just getting ready for the November election. That was pretty much one of the main areas. Plus, so we'll keep you up to date of any new legislation that's going to be coming out. So on that note, then the September 22nd is the date that absentee ballots for the November election will be sent out. And we have, at this point, we will actually be ordering almost 3,000 ballots just in case. So we are set and that's all I have right now. Thank you, Jenny. Library?
My food truck rally or our food truck rally was successful on the 28th. The weather cooperated just perfectly in that timeframe that I needed. We raised, the library raised about $700, including a 50/50 raffle for the Story Gardens. So thank you for everyone who came out to enjoy some delicious food. We'll do it again next year on May 7th and August 27th. We have opened up an online library store in which you can purchase t-shirts, sweatshirts, sweatpants, and hats with the library logo. I will be purchasing something for every day of the week for myself. I wanted to mention that Maggie is doing an amazing job as project coordinator for our drug-free community grant through the CDC. She has grown membership in the youth coalition, has met with many leaders and members of the community, has been at many, many community events. I'm sure you've seen her there. And she's kind of working through the coalition's mission of connecting with the community's youth. And one way she's doing that is there is a bonfire after the homecoming game next Friday already on the high school field and it's going to be opened up to students. Charlotte's Coffee Stop is a big partner in that as well. So I'm hoping that Maggie will do a presentation soon for council about the numbers in the community, what the coalition she's doing. But she is a great asset to this community and she's been very fun to work with. And then I also have, I want to share one story. So last Wednesday, two moms came to the library for the first time. They came all the way from Lake Geneva and they heard about how awesome the library is. So that's why they came. But they were very, not only enthusiastic about the library, but also the splash pad and the parks and what Milton has to offer for youth. So I just wanted to pass along those comments.
That's awesome. Thank you very much. Inka?
I just wanted to say quick that City Hall is going to be closing at noon on Thursday for staff training. We're going to be doing a tour of the Milton House. And then City Hall staff, along with staff from Public Works, the Police Department, and the library will be doing a training with Danny from Sibmic.
Thank you very much. Mark E.
Work's going to start on Woodcrest and Chapel later this week. Sewer televising is also starting either later this week or next week. And then the radar signs, those were put up in the last month. Sounds like they're having some noticeable impact, so that's good.
And you're going to do a tic-tac with the telecasting and stuff? Is that what I heard?
Are those those things you take for bad breath, tic-tac?
You're so smooth. Bad dad jokes already. I thought you were too young, but you're getting close. You're getting some competition, Bill. I just want you to know that. Well, I have to have a bad dad joke. Team building. Kelsey?
I'm just working through budget with everyone. And the end of next week, I will be out at the Municipal Treasurers Association Conference, so.
And what sign, what's your birth sign?
Virgo.
Did you have a birthday recently then?
Maybe. Yesterday.
Well, happy birthday.
Thank you. I appreciate the decorations in my office that were approved by Mark here.
I think we should call him Old Man Mark now. And last but not least, Al.
So as you may have seen on the agenda this evening, we approved two offers to purchase and one option to purchase. If all of those acquisitions come to fruition, there will be no industrial land left owned by the city of Milton, in the city of Milton. As you may recall, we recently optioned the Hall Farm at the northwest corner of Vicarman and Town Line Road. So we'll have to decide if we want to execute that option. And if so, when? We'll likely wait for development to require that. But at the pace of things are going, that probably is not too far off. So it's a good problem to have. Development is starting to shift a little bit. In the 20 years I've been doing this, in the beginning, nobody developed any land that wasn't already owned by a city. And there's rationale and philosophy behind that. But we're starting to see that shift away where some entities are willing to purchase on the private marketplace. where some entities are willing to purchase on the private marketplace for a variety of reasons. Claus and Quality Chocolates was the most recent example here in the city of Milton. Gateway Properties is another one. And with that being said, on September 20th, which is our next agenda, you'll see an annexation of 79 acres of land that is going to be purchased by a developer on the private marketplace. It's requested to be annexed into the city. So I think we might want to kind of wait and see how this all plays out. Again, good problem to have. There is still industrially zoned land in the city of Milton that is under private ownership. But as far as public ownership, if these three offers go into, or are executed, that will take up all the available land that's owned by the city. City still does own land on the commercial side of State Highway 26, but this would be the last three pieces on the industrial side. The other comment, I do absolutely want to echo Ashley's comments about Maggie. Maggie is a tremendous asset to the community and to our organization. She's involved in a number of internal discussions and couldn't be happier about her input and somebody that certainly I look to even for expertise on certain issues. But just, it's another tremendous asset that we have as part of our staff that serves the community and couldn't echo Ashley's comments any better. So those are the big updates on my end, so a lot of good things happening at a really quick pace.
All right. Our next meeting date, September 20th, 2022. I'm happy to see that everybody made it tonight. I appreciate that. Hey, less than an hour, unless you want to chit chat a little bit more about nothing that's on the agenda, and Mark probably won't let us do that, so. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.